This time, we will have a call to order and we will do the roll call. Councilman Carol. Vice Mayor Yasu.
Present.
Councilwoman Johnson. Councilman Hassan.
Present.
Councilwoman Hopkins. She online? No, okay, alright. And Councilman Perkins.
Present.
Okay. Before we proceed, let's review the agenda. Are there any changes or do we want to go ahead with the consent agenda at this time?
And Mayor, I would move to make items. I move make items. G six, G eight, and G ten through thirteen are consented for them.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second that we make G six, which is approved. The Georgia Department of Transportation Local Maintenance Improvement Grant in the amount of ninety-one thousand. G eight, which is approved erecting a plaque to commemorate the sitting mayor and council that have worked with the streetscapes. G ten, which is to approve a resolution with recommendations to present to the Housing Standing Advisory Committee to draft policies and procedures and ordinance related to apartment inspections, tenant landlord relations, and other improvements. G eleven, which is approve a resolution presenting recommendations to the community development and economic development advisory committees to draft a comprehensive workforce development plan for the city of Clarkston. And G twelve, which is to approve a resolution for the creation of downtown development authority to be reviewed with the Community Development and Economic Development Standing Advisory Committees and to coordinate with the city staff on a business and economic strategy program. And G thirteen, which is to approve the proposed city council regular and work session meeting dates and city holiday schedule. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion pass. Now we will proceed with the pledge of allegiance. So everyone, please stand.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the world for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay. With that being said, the next is the administrative business presentation. And that is the approval of the minutes for the city council meeting for eleven four twenty-one and the special call work session for eleven thirty twenty-one. Is there a motion for that item?
I have a motion.
Yes, Councilman Perkins.
And Mayor, I motion that we approve the minutes for the city council meeting on November the fourth, two thousand twenty-one and the special call work session on November the thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, do I have a second? And then once you do it one more time, say I move.
Oh, I said I move.
You said I motion.
Oh, I said I move. Was it the whole thing?
No, it's fine.
I move.
I second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second that we approve the minutes for the city council meeting for eleven four twenty-one and the special call work session eleven thirty twenty-one. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion pass. And now we'll proceed with reports. We'll start with the planning and economic and development report for Ms. Calwee, followed by the city manager report. Ms. Calwee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The first thing for planning economic development is the zoning ordinance rewrite. The zoning, the ordinance rewrite had a technical advisory committee meeting that the consultant team presented the diagnostic report and received feedback from the technical advisory committee and recommended a more hands-on and technical approach to the recommendations in the report. Therefore, we will be holding another technical advisory committee meeting in January to simplify the responses for the public. The technical advisory committee felt that they wanted a little bit more hands-on. The comprehensive plan update, our qualified local government status is pending due to the extension request for public comment. The Department of Community Affairs had a few questions related to our projects and the status and the names. So everything has to correlate according to DCA. So IRC is currently assisting in many of those changes and we will resubmit for approval. The electric vehicle charging station update, of course, has been approved. The city is waiting on Georgia Power to submit a design for us to connect to the existing power for the EV chargers. So we should be getting that design that will be a part of the license agreement so we can move forward with the EV chargers. And the planning and zoning board, congratulations again to Ms. Hood, who also served on our planning and zoning board. So there is a vacancy. So any resident who wants to continue supporting the wonderful city of Clarkston as a member of our planning and zoning board, please submit your application. The applications are located on the website and we can send them to you if you contact me and I will send the application to you. The remainder of the vacant term for Ms. Hood is from December the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. And that ends the planning and economic development report for the city manager's report. Madam Mayor, as of today, data for our vaccinations, and this was of November the fifth, there were three hundred and fifty vaccines administered for the city of Clarkston with the allocated amount of fifty-five thousand dollars and our temporary rental assistance. From the money that was allocated, there were a hundred and eighty-two residents that were assisted as well. With our memorandum of understanding status for our ARPA funds, the CDF action storyboards have been ordered for that memorandum with Ms. Malavinda. And the Burmese community has assisted seventy-eight households and with a total of three hundred and twenty-seven people. And the Friendship Forest Farmhouse renovations, of course, has been on hold. The Historic Preservation Commission wanted more information as far as the use of the farmhouse in order to designate what renovations that will need to be done to the farmhouse. And Clarkston residents, we will soon receive real-time updates and reminders of city happenings. The city is in the process of seeking a company that will bring the benefit of text messages. So you can have instant responses to events and happenings in the city of Clarkston. And Madam Mayor, I'd like to thank those who actually came out on last Friday to our Mylum Holiday Festival. It was very rewarding for the young and the young at heart to those who rode the train. I did ride the train myself. And it was extremely beautiful to see the tree lighting as well. And I want to personally thank Councilman Perkins for his service. It was very exciting working with you. And Councilman Hassan, thank you so much for your support and your service. You will be extremely missed. Thank you. That's the end of my report.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Calwee. We'll now have these. Oh, are there any questions?
I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Ms. Calwee, with those text messages, will they be offered in different languages?
Well, we will, we are still looking into that service, so we will see how we can translate those services for our residents.
Alright, thank you. Thanks for that question as well. Next, we'll have the city attorney, Mr. Quinn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't really have anything to report. The Cab Board of Commissioners had a meeting where our request to de-annex the property near Tucker was included. That was deferred to next week. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Here now, we will proceed with our council remarks. So I'm gonna take a little personal privilege and allow our Dean of the Council, the one and only CPA, the greatest of all time, Councilman Hassan, to start.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody, those who are here and those who are watching. Of course, I don't have to tell you my name. You know me for the last eight years. Tonight is my last session for the council after serving eight years. I want to thank you for Clarkston citizens who elected me twice. Now it's time for me to step aside so the others can serve. I want to thank you vast present and future councils who tirelessly serve for this city. I want to thank you for the city employee who comes every morning to do their job, especially for the last two years. It was hard and I want to thank you for them. I want to thank you especially Chief of the Police, Chief Hudson, who went out of her way to help the immigrant community. And I'm a testimony for that, what she did, but I'm not going to say it here. But I would like to thank you for that. She did beyond call of duty. I want to thank you for our interim city manager, who took the helm when we needed the most and is still pulling double duty. I want to thank you for that. I want to thank you for our mayor, Mayor Beverly, who everybody likes in the city, not only the city, the entire Atlanta maybe. Who, and that's, the testimony is nobody challenged her on her reelection. So that shows that she's quite someone who can lead this city to success. I want to thank you couple of people who are citizens that put our feet on fire all the time. Mr. Medford and his wife are always present for every meeting and give us hard time, but they tell the truth. So I want to thank you for them. Dean Morris always staying here, even though he's not in the council, he did good work when he was in the council, but he is still giving us directions and, you know, how things could have been done. I want to thank you Larry Kaiser, who is the engineer, who for the last eight years that he's been here with twenty million dollars made change the city for, on the streetscapes and all the projects. Stephen, our lawyer, who protects the city from the lawsuits and had a lot of it for the last couple of years. I want to thank you, my counsel, my colleague that are here now. I want to thank you Jimmy. I want to thank you Mark, Awat, Deborah, and Laura, who did excellent job while I was here. Thank you very much. I'm not leaving this city. I've been here for thirty-four years. I will retire here and I will be around. Thank you very much. I did not forget Dan DeBro because I kept the last is not the least. Our financial, you know, management was in disarray. After he came, everything went out straight and I want to thank you, special thank you for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And on that up button, again, we are so blessed to have you. And so I'm going to do the second personal privilege of allowing Councilman Perkins, who was new and got right into it, the mix in two thousand twenty-one in March. So Councilman Perkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have quite the legacy as Councilman Hassan, so I think it's a great picture of the footsteps in which I've followed. While my term has been very brief. I did have the, every intention of running for reelection and I've received a number of questions on why that was not the case. And I want to share briefly with all of you, and those who didn't know, back in August, my wife and I found out that our unborn children were experiencing a medical emergency and had to get an emergency operation done to save their lives. So they're still stable, but we, it sort of threw our world into chaos. And I had to make the hard decision of whether or not to run for reelection in the midst of that and caring for my family and decided that I was not going to be able to continue to serve the community in my existing capacity as well as run for reelection. And so I wanted to say thank you to those of you that I have gotten to know through this term. I have learned a ton from all of you and even more from our community, from our staff, from those who live and work and call Clarkson home. There are so many people who don't always operate in the spotlight. They aren't up in front or on camera or on a dais. They live in homes and in apartment complexes and drive in from out of town and have invested their lives and their hearts in our city. And that is why I ran and why I will continue to serve even out of office, hopefully retreating, not quite as much in the spotlight. But it has inspired me to see our community at our best in the pandemic. We have a lot of challenges. Sometimes it's, you know, it's ourselves and sometimes it's external. But I've seen when we work together and put our differences aside, there's a lot of good that we can do. So I will be brief as my term was brief, but it has been a complete honor to serve you all in this capacity. And I hope to continue to serve in a different capacity at the end of this year and at the end of my term. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm gonna stand up for you. Thank you. Thank you, you two. And now we will proceed with our Vice Mayor Yasu.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not going anywhere. I still got two more years. But yeah, but I really want to thank both the departing council members. Both Councilmember Perkins and my good friend Councilman Hassan. I'm really going to miss both of you, but I'm sorry to see you leave. I'm especially going to miss working with Councilman Hassan. Being of an immigrant background, I, even though we don't come from the same country in Africa, we share lots of cultural background and I'm really going to miss working with him. And however, he's still going to be here, so I will definitely continue getting his counsel. And saying that, I'm really thankful for your services, both of you. You have really made our city better. And I'm really looking forward to work in different capacities. And this last month, there is not really a lot I can report, but the holiday lighting, tree lighting, I attended the tree lighting. Thank you so much, City Manager Ms. Calwee, and our city staff, who actually made that happen. And thanks to the mayor. It was great. My daughter loved riding the train and she did love the picking of the ruffles. And that's going to be quite a memory for my family. And I want to thank all the people who attended, including so many that I see right now with us. And thank you for attending that event. I want to wish all our residents a great Christmas, great New Year, and overall Hanukkah or any other holiday that I celebrate. And I really wish you all great holidays and that's pretty much what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Carol.
I would also like to thank councilmembers Hassan and Perkins. Councilmember Hassan was on the council when I first got on it back in two thousand seventeen. Definitely gave me a lot of guidance and wisdom over the years. I appreciate, you know, all the input he's given. I appreciate, I especially appreciate his detailed study of the city's finances. I think he may be the only one in the council that can understand the detailed reports we get each year in the finances. So I appreciate his dedication and studying those. And, you know, I look forward to still, you know, hopefully helping, watching him serve the community after he leaves. But I definitely appreciate his service these last eight years. And also appreciate Councilman Perkins' service, although it's been briefer these last nine months. It's not easy to run for a contested election, knowing you're only going to serve for nine months. It's a lot of work and I appreciate him jumping into it. I'm sorry that the medical difficulties have prevented him from continuing to serve in the council, but I definitely appreciate these nine months. And just like with Councilman Hassan, I look forward to working with him after that. I'd also like to thank the city staff for their hard work this last year. I know it's not been easy with the pandemic and so a lot of staff transitioned, but I appreciate that the remaining staff has really stepped up and I think done a good job. So I want to thank them. Also echo Councilman Hassan. I'd like to thank this as in members that come to these meetings and comment and help keep us accountable. I appreciate that. I'd like to thank all the council members for their service so far this year, including Mayor Burks. I'd also like to thank her for her service this year so far. And I look forward to just working with the new council in the new year and hopefully finishing this year out strong and continue to serve the community next year.
Thank you. And Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Johnson, sorry. I want to start off with Hassan. I hate to see you go. You've been an inspiration for me. It was all new to me and Laura and you were there. Any phone call, we could get through to you. You helped us tremendously, so I want to thank you for the privilege of working with you. Same goes to you, Mark. You were always a help for me. You made me rationalize some things, so I thank you for your service. It was only nine months, but it felt like nine years. So thank you.
Is this a compliment or?
I think it's a compliment. That's a compliment. And as Council has previously stated, I wanted to specially thank Ms. Calwee and Ms. Durdan Defnal for stepping up to the plate when we needed you the most and you guys have really held it down. So thanks for being a team player. And we look forward to your great works in two thousand twenty-two. And that goes for everybody else on the council. Welcome, Madam Mayor, and thank you for being our mayor. Awat, you are the vice mayor, the mayor, the councilman, the, you're it. So I just thank everybody. Jamie, Jamie, Jamie. Thank you for taking my calls when I had questions and concerns and needed you to rationalize what I was thinking. So I'm excited to continue working with you and thank you for being on council. Now, my march was a little interesting because I had the pleasure of working with Georgia State's health campaign, healthcare campaign. We actually did a massive food drive in the city of Clarkston. It ran for three months. And in November, on November the sixth, we had the pleasure of servicing, I just forgot the name of the apartments.
Oh, the Stern? Not the Stern ones.
No, it was Silver Oaks. We were in Silver Oaks offering gift cards, food, and they had a very good turnout. So the next day, we were at the Clarkson First Baptist with our veterans. They had a Veterans Day celebration and we also did a food drive for that event as well. On the thirteenth, we had the Clarkston Mobile Food Drive. And we also had a shared event at the Clarkson Community Bible Church. We actually helped Georgia State there. So that's what I did in the month of November. And it's not November, but December, was it December first, your birthday? Or November thirtieth? November thirtieth was the mayor's birthday, so I would like to tell the mayor happy birthday. I know it had to be special being the mayor on your birthday. And that's it for me, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Councilwoman Hopkins.
Hello. Thank you for letting me zoom in here. I just want to apologize for not being there in person. I did have reason to feel I should be COVID tested today, even though I have been vaccinated multiple times. But per Emory standards, if you don't have the results back, you need to self-quarantine. So I figured I to counsel as well. So I'm doing it this way, but I do want to thank both Councilmember Perkins and Hassan. I want to say in both of your cases, I should be ashamed to admit, but I had very much underestimated the both of you. You're both very much going to be missed on council. Councilmember Hassan, honestly, I did not expect, I knew you were very capable. I knew you were an accountant and all of that, but I did not expect your very quick, dry wit, which was surprising. And I just want to say, for example, not everybody heard this, but at the last meeting, it seemed like we might have gotten caught up on the first couple items longer than we had intended to. And then when Vice Mayor said, okay, moving on, and Hassan, a council member, Hassan said, yes, okay, item eleven now. And we were only on like three and he was trying to jump seven. And Councilmember Perkins, I love the fact, again, the kind of passion that you hit it with is really uncommon. I did not expect you to jump in. And I know what Councilmember Johnson meant. You probably put in like nine years worth of work in nine months. I have rarely seen somebody jump in, working that hard, both to get elected and then once you're on the council, working with that much energy and passion. And I understand it would be impossible to maintain that and also have family health concerns at the same time. So I'm wishing you the best and hoping that both of you will return at some point in the future when it's more amenable to your lives. And that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, council members, and for the mayor's report. Thank you, Vice Mayor Yasu, for filling in on my birthday, you know. I got sworn in on my birthday last year, but I said I wanted to have a little time for myself for my birthday. So this, thank you very much. It's a season and with that season, we were grateful to have a bountiful harvest with Councilman Hassan and his wisdom and his logic and his support. And the fact that he is my neighbor and I can go around the cul-de-sac to find him and talk to him about things is wonderful. But he's a genuinely concerned about this community and everything about making this community a stronger community. And so we appreciate your wisdom that you brought to the city and always ensuring that we were fiscally and financially sound, which has been a great attribute for us. So we cannot say how much we need that and we appreciate what you did for us. So thank you so much for everything. And for Councilman Perkins, we started this journey last year when we did the COVID, you know, and trying to make sure that our city was safe. And so while he was on council for nine months, he has been digging the trenches and making sure in terms of protecting our community, he has been stellar at that. So thank you for your time and everything that you've done and the wisdom that you got when we went to our classes and brought it back to council. So we appreciate that as well. We hope the best for you and your family and wish you well and continue the success that you've been doing and continue your involvement in the community, both of you. So thank you. Also for activities, I did support Councilwoman Johnson with the food drives, but we also did one for our seniors at the Stern Senior Facility. We made sure that they had a happy and bountiful Thanksgiving and we made sure that they had all the fixins and food for them to be able to do. And so we were very happy to support that. We also did the Tree Festival and that was a wonderful opportunity. So thank you again for that. One of the other things that I'm working on now is, as you know, we are in the midst of our Afghan parolees and evacuees coming. And so I'm working now with our resettlement agencies to help educate the community about the situation and also to provide an opportunity to help. So we're going to do a webcast next week on Wednesday and I'll provide additional information. But we're going to make sure that we provide you with how you can help with this transition for many people who are coming here. So it's very important that as a Clarkston community, we keep up with what's happening. And this is something that is impacting all of us. And so how can we all work together on this one? And so we're going to do that and I'm working with Justin from IRC and we're working with American Pathways. And so we're going to talk about the involvement and we're going to get very involved with that. So I want to make sure we keep that at the forefront as well. We do with all of the issues facing our community, but that's something that's really important that we talk. but that's something that's really important that we talk about. And that will conclude my report. And so we will now move on to public comments. So any member of the public may address the council during the time allotted for public comments. Each attendee will be allowed three minutes for comments at the discretion of the presiding officer. The public comment period will be limited to forty minutes, and it is not a time for dialogue. If your public comment contains a series of questions, please submit those to the city clerk in writing. This will facilitate follow-up by the city, by the council or staff. The city council desires to allow an opportunity for public comment. However, the business of the city must proceed in an orderly and timely manner. Ms. Cowie, do we have anyone online that signed up to speak? And I'll start the time.
Madam Mayor, it's Ms. Roberto Malavenda.
Okay. Ms. Malvin. Roberto.
Hello. I actually signed up to speak at a for an agenda item way down in the in the session, but I will give that comment now and later if possible. I would just wanted to commend the mayor and the council for entertaining the resolutions to provide direction to two of the standing committees to take a look at workforce development and housing. I'm really excited about this, and I think other members of the community are also excited that you are taking a planful approach to taking a look at these two very important areas that affect all of Clarkston. And would also like to recommend that there also be a plan to develop community engagement that works side by side with the committee to ensure that community voices are heard throughout the process. And as we have seen, community engagement is not easy. It's multifaceted and that we need a plan to ensure different strategies to engage different people, different residents of Clarkston in the process who have ideas, concerns, questions, and are willing to work. So that is really what I would like to say and to say that CDF Action and our partners are very willing to help with that community engagement strategy and with the plan for community engagement for those two committees. And last, I would like to say that the Early Learning Childcare Task Force, which was appointed by the city about two years ago, would like to present a final report and its recommendations at the February work session and council meeting to share what we've learned, what we've done, what our recommendations are currently, and what our plans are for moving forward in the next couple of years. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Cowie, anyone else sign up?
These are public comments for each individual agenda item, Madam Mayor, but I'm going to go ahead and just say for public speaking purposes, Mr. Metford. Do you want to wait for your item, Mr. Metford, or you want to go ahead?
This is the council, so they wouldn't, they'd have to do this in public comments now.
That's it?
Did you?
There's two more online voices.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
The Mr. I didn't see.
Well, there's another. Okay, so so Metford at home.
But Metford at home. Ian Metford.
Ian Metford.
Yes.
Go right ahead, Mr. Metford.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I am proposing an upgrade and repair for Mylon Park. I would like to see a few items in Mylon Park repaired or upgraded. Some of these things are missing. There is the small drum set and the playset for the little kids is missing and broken. Now I'd like to see repaired. And others, like the playground for the older kids, I'd like to see new equipment for. So I frequently use this set, and it is kind of getting old. Something else I would see is used for the little round land around the sign. You can use flowers. They look pretty. Something else. The baseball field is destroyed and not destroyed, but in disrepair. I'd like to see it re. I don't know. Reused or just upgraded. The other soccer fields need some new bleachers. The old ones are broken. And it needs some grassing. The rest, the bathroom walls could use some street art maybe to make it look pretty. That is all.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Metford. And we're starting a new generation of the Metfords. Loving it. Ms. Cowie.
Oh, then it's my turn, if that's okay.
Okay, the next Metford.
I wanted to say that the event at the park on Friday was quite lovely, and it was evident there was a lot of work and preparation that had gone into that, and it was really nice. I was just so disappointed there weren't more people there to participate, to see it and to, you know, just to enjoy it and to be a part of it. It was such a great event, and they had put so much time and effort in it. I wish more people had been there to enjoy it. The things I'm concerned about are the agenda process that's up for discussion today. I'm really worried about this one, and I really would encourage the council to wait and have these discussions that, yes, I think how items get put on the agenda does need to be codified, but I think it should go through a process with public comment, much like charter review goes through, so the public can participate. Perhaps one of the ways we do that is by encouraging other languages or have something in our process that includes language translation or the opportunity for people that are non-native English speakers to somehow understand what's going on, be a part of what's going on, even offering the agenda in more than English as a language. Could be something to be discussed that could come out in these discussions if they were held out in the open. The other thing I'm really in favor of that I would really strongly encourage you to support is the Fresh Harvest Mobile Farmers Market. This helps our most vulnerable residents, those that are poor and come from all across the world. And Fresh Harvest has already been doing so much to partner with and help these people. All they're asking the city to do is to join their already in-progress program. They're asking the city to partner with them to do this, to be a hero. You're being asked to be a hero for hundreds of Clarkston residents. I can't see how that's a bad thing. These are foods that these people can't get elsewhere, foods from home and foods that they can afford, that will come to them, that they don't have to walk through dangerous streets to get to, be it a mile or even half a mile. Trekking your kids down Indian Creek for groceries isn't the safest plan. Please allow this to go through. Support this group as they support and nurture our residents in a sustainable way. I understand that the ARPA fund specifically may be an issue, but work together and find a way in the line item in the budget somewhere to make this a reality. Be a hero for these people. I also can't wait to see what comes out of the committees on housing, jobs, and to see what evolves through the DDA. So I look forward to those committee announcements for meetings so that the public can be involved and be in this process. Thank you.
Thank you. And now the final Metford. Okay.
So that's where that came from. So, all right. Tonight I've come down here in person so I can look at you face to face. I've already emailed you my thoughts on Agenda Item G nine, but I'm going to expand a little more for the public record. Is this really how this council wants to be remembered? Carrying out a vote to hinder felt so count felt fellow councilperson's voices into the false promise of teamwork? Is this how the tone you want to set going forward for future councils? Changes are coming to the city that can't be stopped. There's an election in two years that will see a different group of like citizens that you haven't even heard from yet. If that election doesn't go so well for some of the folks currently sitting up here, would it still seem like a good choice on swearing-in day in 2024? Will it bother you if your voice suddenly doesn't matter? Will you be okay with the new voting block that doesn't include you? You're setting a precedent based on a short-term vision, but with long-term effects. Think about what you campaigned on and what you campaigned against, and ask yourself honestly, have I become the thing that I hated? Because from this side of the dais, the line's getting a little blurry. So I would prefer that you table Item G nine for some retooling, rewrite it, come back with some better ideas, something more fair. Let the next council decide how they will operate. As it currently sits in the agenda item listed now, I believe it's unacceptable. I believe there can be better. I believe it can be codified. The rules need to be out there. I had a hard time finding these rules, and I am a Google food master. I would love to see the the way that the council operates put out there so we can see how the meat's made. Show us how the sausage is made. Show us the line items, things like that, how this all works. Because I think there's a lot of people who'd like to see that. But let's codify it. Let's do like we did the charter review. Let's go do line by line. Let's discuss it with the public, because frankly, but there's like eight people online, probably. Twelve people in here. There's still just not enough input on how the council is going to operate. Table G nine, come back in two, three months, put some ideas behind it, and then let the new council people that are coming in vote on it then. It's not a bad idea, but it can be retooled, but it needs to represent everybody. And I think the two council persons set up is the correct ratio. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Metford. Did anyone else want to speak at this time? Mr. Jimmy?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members. I'm from a hotspot lounge. There's been, since the the repeal ordinance nineteen dash four three three repeal. It's been almost four months now, and I've been coming here every month. Try to inform inform you guys how we sustaining our business and try to get help to revisit this ordinance and look at it, how it affected us. And I've been submitting the tax paper, and you can look at it months by months, and you can see the difference, what what the how affecting us. And it's not even affecting us like affecting employees. We are, we have very hard time to get employees. And even that we hired them, and the next day they quit because no one's coming, no one's walking. So it just, I do everything I can do to 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 draw attention, to bring people, even daytime. We even put it on billboard on exit Lawrenceville. So it just, it doesn't seem that much to help us. So that this being done by the city council members, they came and checked the business, and they allow us to stay late and sell food and alcohol. And it was helping us out. But now it's just, we going back, we have this experience almost almost for three years now. We we having it right now. So please, if you guys can help us revisit what's the problem and what's going on with this, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Come to the podium.
My name is Dean Moore. Live on Rayford Trail. I wanted to comment on the plaque for the Streetscapes Project. Somebody had mentioned that it started in 2012, and it actually goes back 2005. We had a $4 million grant from Cynthia McKinney, and council members had joined together to secure that grant. It wasn't until 2012, after we professionalized the city, that we were able to actually leverage that and get a loan from the GTIP Bank to come up with matching funds because we're seriously out of balance with our budget. And we are a successful city today, but from our last meeting, meeting last week, I thought we picked up a council member from the 2000 aughts. I'd been asked to meet with Fresh Harvest about this issue of fixing up a food truck. And I just want to clarify, it's not actually a food truck that you invite to events that would sell food that's prepared for consumption at the event. They're actually kind of a grocery market. And I had encouraged them when I met with David Pope to see what they could do to collaborate with the city to, if they had had a collaboration earlier on, moving into this request may have been a little more feasible and an easier relationship with everybody. But last week, it just seemed like it kind of broke down and I thought that they could be a great service to the city. I still think they could in some way. But I also encourage them to reach out to other parts of our community, like the county and the state, and possibly federal funds to help them with their mission that they would like to serve the public with. And I hope that they can continue, and maybe someday in the future we can, but it seems like not many people are going to jump on board with the kind of stuff I saw last week when I was online. I figured I'd come down here tonight to just reiterate that I think that the council does need to develop a procedure and methods to bring things to the agenda. I think Amy Medford said it well, to provide meetings, public meetings, town hall meetings, committee meetings that actually invite people with special knowledge and special talents to provide feedback or actually guidance for the council and for the city to move forward into the future. I think there can be a big collaboration with a lot of people in the city, other private businesses, as Fresh Harvest and a lot of people are doing a lot of good things. And I don't want to limit the scope of what the council or what the city can do with these collaborations. But I would like to see the council get itself together to work together to provide things for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Councilman Perkins, Carol, Mayor Burks, Hassan, let's see, Anna Debra. We want to come and give you some token of our love because y'all been good to our veterans. And also Renee is going to read a proclamation that was given to this community, for the veterans of this community by Hank Johnson. And and it'd be, it'll be signed into Congress that on Veterans Day is, I'll actually read it to you all, and I'll give all your certificate. Kudos to all of you.
Thank you.
Okay, so on November sixth, the House of Representatives proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the fourth congressional district of Georgia is honored with the esteemed presence of the men and women that served our veterans through the through the Veterans and Community Outreach Foundation. And whereas for more than thirty years, the Veterans and Community Outreach Foundation has promoted a positive quality of life for economically disadvantaged youth and their families. Honored veterans and supported current Current ex offenders through current and ex offenders through the social services and community advocacy. And whereas our beloved country has and continues to benefit from the service of the members of the Veterans and Community Outreach Foundation. In areas of leadership, service and scholarship for students in our community. And whereas this unique, this unique group has given of themselves tirelessly. And unconditionally to advocate for our youth and veterans. And whereas the Veterans and Community Outreach Foundation continues to serve our country. By planning, organizing and conducting ceremonies that commemorate and recognize those who served our country in the United States military. By offering scholarships to our students so that they can attain a higher education. And by assisting in the healing of veterans who have fallen spiritually, emotionally and physically. And whereas the U.S. Representative of the fourth district of Georgia. Has set aside this day to honor and recognize. The Veterans and Community Outreach Foundation for its outstanding service to our nation. Now therefore, I, Henry C. Hank Johnson, Jr. Do hereby proclaim November sixth, 2021 as Veteran and Community Outreach Foundation Day.
Thank you.
This could not have happened without you all. And we also got one from Michael Thurman. So we want to make sure that we all we will get return that gift to you all. And anything that y'all want us to do, y'all can just call on us. Because we'll be there for you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And we did one for you guys too as well from the city, but don't forget, we did one too. But no, thank you. And thank you all for your comments. It is through your comments that we as a council grow. And yes, one more. All right.
Thanks. I'm Josh back again. One of the people last comment since I know you guys are about to talk about this. The the share the harvest chart proposal. Thanks for your time so far and glad you're all in the same room and get to talk. I know how hard it is to work around everybody's schedules and talk on phones and stuff like that. So it's great to have everybody in the room. And it's great to have been able to talk with each of you individually. It's encouraging to hear everyone say like. The final product, that idea is a wonderful idea. And we want to see it happen in Clarkson. I'm glad we all share that vision. And so tonight it kind of comes down to. What the details are and the wonderful thing is you guys control all the details. So. Whether that is through ARPA funding or through a city line item budget and partial ARPA funding. I know you guys can work it out and I look forward to to seeing a resolution tonight so that we know how to move forward. There were some questions on the ARPA funding about, you know, does this even work? And so I did a little research in that and. There's definitely precedent if if you guys choose to use ARPA funding. The city of Cleveland has used over $5 million going towards. Food distribution, so including capital improvements for local organizations that served. The food distribution needs. A lot of that, the the federal government in general, we know cares a lot about. The ARP money going towards food security because USDA was pointing out that at the height of the pandemic. Forty seven percent, I found that kind of hard to believe, but apparently forty seven percent according to USDA percent of population in the U.S. Faced food insecurity. So we know just in terms of the spirit of the of the money. That they care about this and we know from precedent from not only Cleveland, the last place I lived in Memphis, they spent $3 million. Kind of same deal going towards organizations, capital improvement, infrastructure to expand the reach of their food distribution processes. Even here in Georgia, Statesboro sent a million dollars of ARPA funding to do things like that. So if you're worried about precedent, I'm sure that Mr. Quinn can can work out the details. We can, you know, that that seems possible. I also know you guys are very experienced with the budget, so if that's a city line item, that's great. And then in terms of questions as a whole. As you know, I welcome your questions. I've been calling trying to get them all in the same place. And so as you're talking through it tonight, I'm sitting here. So feel free to ask any questions on how we modify this. Is is this a little less amount? Okay, or, you know. If one of the strategies was like fifteen thousand of the business assistance and then through a city line item, if that's the case. Just making sure that that would work through the business assistance program. That I would want some sort of confirmation between you guys that that's in line or whatever strategy it is that you fall on. I just love to hear from you all that that's the way that it goes. And if it's, you know. Partial business assistance, partial line item, that's okay, as long as it's all approved by you all. And yeah, just just looking forward to the finished product and seeing. Not only expanding outreach of things like the baskets with that we're doing, you mentioned the Afghan families like. That's great work and and even more of it can happen and. You know, I definitely welcome the Gates Foundation money. If any of you guys have contacts, let us know, but with the $600,000 you have left in the $2 million next year. Or just the city budget. We do believe that that this is doable here in Clarkson and. You know, on our side, we're contributing not only the the hundreds of thousands of dollars of. Food donations, but then the the money straight from Fresh Harvest as well. So in the grand scheme of things, it might be small. It can seem big in discussions, but. The big thing is seeing. Families actually have greater access to healthy food. No, you know. Not only are they getting any food, but it's not powdered potatoes and taki's. It's fresh, organic, locally grown vegetables. There's the opportunity to partner with local growers and artisans and not and help employ people here as well. So I look forward to the questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you. If there's no one else from the public, we will close public comments at this time. With that being said, we will now move into old business, which is F one to approve ARPA. Fund amendment, Fresh Harvest Food Truck Purchase. And Ms. Kawi, if we can go ahead and have a discussion about that or move on to Councilman Carroll and Councilman Perkins for that. So I want you to kind of do an intro and then from a procedural perspective, I would like for us to have a motion. To work from that motion in terms of discussion and going from there. Is that fine with the council? So let's do the intro. Motion. Discussion. However, we go. Okay.
So this is item F one. This is the Fresh Harvest Food Truck that I believe Mr. Deaton just discussed. In your packet, there's a proposed memorandum of understanding. Between the city of Clarkson and Fresh Harvest regarding this food truck. And the idea behind the food truck is that it would. If funded, provide essentially $130,000 worth of food donations within the city of Clarkson. So if you paid $65,000 for the food truck, you would get double that amount. And food donations just to Clarkson residents within the city of Clarkson. So I think that that's a pretty good return on the investment. For example, if we fund food distribution, we fund 10,000 food distribution, we get 10,000 of food. And here we can do 65,000 and get 130,000. So the idea is is that it provides, you know, fresh organic food to the different residents and Councilman Sants, or did you have something?
Yeah, but.
We'll do it later.
Yeah, we'll do it later.
Okay, so I'm just an intro now and then we can discuss discuss more later. So I know there's been some. Discussion on how exactly to fund it, whether it's better to fund it through ARPA. I think that there was an email from. City Attorney Quinn indicating that he did conclude after all that this, the funding distribution would fit under ARPA. And but of course, there's also the option of funding some through ARPA, some through the city budget, funding through the city budget and not ARPA. I'm open to the different options and to hearing what the council's pleasure is on this particular item.
So you repeat that what the Stevens said about the.
So Stevens sent an email saying that I think at the previous council meeting, there was some discussion about how each individual food recipient would need to be qualified. In order to do distribution and then the city, the city attorney did further research on it and discovered that if the community itself is suffering from COVID. You don't have to qualify each individual resident. So for example, when we do food drives. When we handing that out to each person who drives by, they don't have to be qualified because the community itself is suffering. So you don't have to qualify each member for the food drive. It would be the same thing for the food truck. They wouldn't have to qualify each person they give food to. They would just have to prove the community as overall is. So suffering to lack of food and suffering due to COVID. But I think that they have said that they would try to qualify residents and only give discounts to people that are truly in need. But it wouldn't, it's not legally required under ARPA, I believe, for them to do that is what the city attorney stated.
So I'll let the city attorney to follow up with that piece. Council, I'm sorry, Mr. Quinn.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilman Carroll summarized it pretty well. Specifically, the U.S. Treasury advises that. If the community that's receiving the food is overall low to moderate income. That it's presumed that there's been a negative economic impact of COVID on the people getting the benefit as a group. And that you don't need to test the individuals when you give out the benefit.
Thank you. And as far as Clarkson, we're considered an opportunity zone, so that helps in terms of our designation. Correct?
I haven't confirmed that we're designated an opportunity zone, but that's consistent with, you know, my understanding and. It's also, I can confirm that that rule exists, that qualified census tracts. Are another way to be presumed that the expense is appropriate under ARPA.
Okay, thank you.
No, not yet.
I got a question as well.
Okay.
So I I I think if I miss, if I didn't misunderstand, your response was, Mr. Quinn, what your response was. To the question that was raised about our food distribution. Isn't that correct?
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
Okay. So at this point, we will entertain a motion and then proceed with this.
One more question.
You got a quick question? Okay, all right.
Yeah. As far as it goes for the for the truck, the $65,000 that. Is it if it comes from a ARPA or federal funds? It did you, is that acceptable or what?
Well, I think that what what the what would be the acceptable ARPA expenditure. Is delivering the food to the community. And I would categorize the proposal with the truck as a means of doing that. You know, I think. As separately, just advising the city on getting their money's worth, you know, so to speak, separate from ARPA. I had raised a concern before, not not a concern, but a consideration. You know, the the truck is mobile and that if the city was going to pay for it, that. We should have some kind of restriction. On the use of the truck. That it's not, you know, going down to downtown Atlanta and selling corn dogs. When they have a festival or whatever. And it sounded like the. The Harvest Group was amenable to that. And and what I have not done. Yet, because I've been waiting on the council to ask me to do so, is engage directly with them to work out the legal details. I have seen their proposed memorandum of understanding. I think that it's fine, but it lacks some of those details and I think. They agree that we just haven't done it yet. You know, so you could either have the city keep an ownership, own the truck and they operate it under certain terms. Or the city could keep an ownership interest in it. That could be reclaimed if the terms weren't complied with. But but overall, I think it is an acceptable use of either city or ARPA money.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Quinn. So at this time, I will entertain a motion on this item.
Motion to approve.
A second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and second that we approve.
No, I have. The most, you know, motion to approve what? I mean, city fund?
Are you making a motion or?
No, no, I'm just. I still have a question.
Okay, okay.
I mean, the approval that you're making, is it the city fund? Or art fund? Which one it is?
I would prefer ARPA, honestly, rather than city funds, because I think this is what ARPA is designed for. I think we have more ARPA funds. It wouldn't necessarily trade off the city budget. So if I were to make a motion, I would move move for it to be used for ARPA funds.
But you limited that to $15,000. Don't you have to change that first?
I would just say, I would just do this separate from the business, just like the equipment is going to be more than 15. And I would say this is a separate category from the business assistance, because I really think this is more in the category of food distribution rather than business assistance.
I think we're going on discussion before.
Make a motion then.
Okay, so go ahead and make your motion.
Okay. I move that we approve. The use of $40,000 in ARPA funds. For the memorandum of understanding between the city of Clarkson and Fresh Harvest with understanding that. That Fresh Harvest can also apply for the other for another 15,000 with the city staff, if the city staff chooses to approve or not. And that otherwise the memory that the city attorney be directed. To finalize the memorandum of understanding with the other restrictions that were discussed in terms of not taking the truck outside of the 30021 area code. Until the $130,000 in the agreed funding of food donations has been actually donated.
Second, okay, it's been properly moved and second. That. We approve the ARPA funds for $40,000. And that. I had a whole list of stuff. Let me make sure. Okay. And that we have a memorandum of understanding between the city of Clarkston and Fresh Harvest with the understanding that Fresh Harvest would apply for. The additional 15,000 with the city staff. As to approve or not, and that otherwise the memorandum of understanding would go through the city attorney to be directed. With restrictions that were discussed in terms of not taking the truck outside of 30021 area. Area until the 130,000 is agreed upon and funding has been donated.
That's right.
Okay. So we have a discussion with this particular piece, 40,000 ARPA funding. Counsel?
We still on discussion?
We're on discussion.
Right, so. Forty thousand and 25,000, we split it into two, right?
So what I'm hearing is we are taking the 40,000 straight from Harper.
Okay.
There's discretion of the 15,000 for them to apply. Through the business portion where we said you could have up to 15,000. Now that is up to the staff to say whether or not it qualifies. For that funding.
But 40,000 is directly we approving?
Forty thousand is what we are directly approving tonight.
From the art fund?
From the art fund.
I clear now.
Okay, anybody else need clarity? Anybody else need clarity? Here no more clarity? Online, do we need clarity? Okay, I don't hear any more clarity. All right, you ready for the discussion? Ready for the question now?
Is there any discussion before we have them?
I believe there were some questions that had been raised previously.
Okay, any question? No question?
I just.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
I would just like that. I know there's been some some debate and in terms of how this, you know, fits in terms of. You know, selling food to people in need and just from a community development standpoint, which happens to be one of the areas of my background. This is really falls within best practices. It's not to replace food distribution, food pantries, things like that. But it's it's part of a pathway for economic mobility for people who are economically disadvantaged. When you are addressing a disaster, whether it be economic in nature or a natural disaster like a hurricane. Or a tsunami or a tornado, which I'm familiar with. You know, the first line of defense is always immediate relief. You know, that's that's your food pantries, that's your food distribution, that's your aid boxes. It's critically important. These things aren't in competition. And then as people sort of get their bearings, you know, we've stopped the bleeding. We want to provide options for people that that sort of move them towards, maybe they're not able to shop at Publix. But it allows them to some autonomy and some choice in terms of what they're able to purchase, but within their means. but within their means. So they're not having to decide between their cancer medication and whether or not they can put food on the table for their kids. I don't believe this food truck is the only solution, but I think it's a great example of encouraging our local businesses to think innovatively and an opportunity for us as a city council to encourage that innovative thinking. Maybe not footing the entire bill, but footing a portion of a line item in the total bill and something that will continue on in a sustainable way along in the future. And so again, I just want to make sure that we don't think of this as in competition with, you know, certainly not with Publix, though I love for it to become in competition with Publix with the quality of service that you're providing. You know, I think of some of our medical clinics here, sort of their mission is providing world-class medical care at a price that everyone can afford. And I see this food truck and is, is something in a similar vein of that. Groceries, fresh, fresh produce at a price that anyone could afford. So I thank you guys for bringing this proposal to our attention. Obviously, I would, you know, advise my colleagues to vote for it. I think it's a great opportunity for us to, to set an example of what partnerships can look like and, and encourage our businesses to be thinking beyond their own bottom lines. But to think of the broader community as well and how they can continue to give back. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And yes, Councilman Asan?
Yeah, I, you know, I deal with every day, you know, you, you, you know, the SBA and federal funds and the people applying, you know, grants, especially, you know, nonprofit organizations, SBA loans and all that stuff. So this is, the funds that we receive, you know, we have been given for a reason. So I think if we distribute for a, for a good reason, that I have no issue with that. But we, I'm only thing, the only thing that, that I'm, I'm really making sure that no money comes from the city funds or the general funds, you know, whatever, you, you know, you know, because we have, but if we are only, whether it's ARPA, you know, 40,000 or applying, you, you know, and other qualifications, you know, I have no issue with that. But the only thing is, I, I, no, although I'm not going to be here, the only thing I don't like it is money coming from the general funds because the city is going to need their funds. But this is a federal funds and the reason we have been given is to help businesses and people.
Vice Mayor?
Madam Mayor, I definitely appreciate the, the business on their interest in helping our community. And the only thing that we are not sure about it is what is next? Are we going to have another company come here and ask us for more money? And they would say, okay, we're going to double your money, you're going to double your investment. How are we going to do it? And what is, what insurance do we have that this investment is going to be paid back? And, or if it did not, what we're going to do is a truck? I think this is, I honestly don't see the difference whenever we see money. It doesn't matter whether federal government is giving us, it's for, to be used for our, for the, for our residents. So either way, I would honestly prefer to use our own funds and because this, our own funds, we are accountable to our, to the, to the city residents only. But this ARPA money is, we are accountable federally, we are responsible for this money. And we're going to have to report to the federal government where we spend it. So I am okay with the business applying for the $15,000 and it's the discretion of our staff that they are approved or not. But I, I don't really see this fitting on the ARPA. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any more discussion? Yes, Councilwoman Hopkins?
I, I like the idea. I do agree with Councilmember Perkins in that once we get past the initial stop the bleeding of a crisis, it is better to charge, even if you're charging a nickel, to get, let people have some sense of control of their lives and to have something they can rely on and they can do for themselves. My concern is, as it has been, I think there might have the way this is presented, this particular thing, I know, you know, the lakes is not in Clarkston. Willow Branch is not in Clarkston. All of the money that's been given to us from ARPA is essentially meant for Clarkston people, although we don't have to vet every individual person. If we are talking about a capital expenditure, which is the equivalent of a brick and mortar building, but it's on wheels. If, you know, 50% of their transactions would be in places like the lakes and Willow Branch, I'm not convinced that they're willing to keep it strictly inside Clarkston. And I would have preferred to have seen a coalition between Clarkston and DeKalb County and the other cities. So if they're going to be operating 30% in Clarkston, the City of Clarkston, you know, pays 30% of the expense of the truck. And then they don't have to worry about making sure they stay within the city boundaries. I think a coalition of different municipalities would have been a better way to do it than to have the City of Clarkston pay 100% of it and then have to either restrict their movements or we're just paying money and having there take the entire business model outside of Clarkston because it's on wheels. And so as much as I would like to have seen that, that's not what's being presented tonight. I don't have the opportunity to spearhead this and make it into a different kind of project where it is a coalition between Clarkston and DeKalb County and Tucker and maybe some of the other DeKalb municipalities that would be, or, or Fulton municipalities that would be beneficiaries of this. If, if I could do that, I would, and I would be 100% in support of it. But I have not heard any particular enthusiasm from the folks at Fresh Harvest about us purchasing the truck and then restricting that it must stay inside Clarkston or any volunteering to get the other municipalities that they want to serve to also participation. So as it's been presented tonight, I can't support it.
Thank you, Councilman Carroll. Did you?
I was just going to say that the MOU does require $130,000 in food donations to be given within Clarkston. So that's in the MOU requirements. If they don't do that, the truck can be repossessed by the City of Clarkston. So it does address that concern in the MOU.
Is that, I mean, I'm, this is going to sound really catty, but I was a subscriber to the Fresh Harvest before. Is that 130,000 at Fresh Harvest prices or at like Proger prices?
No, this is donations. This is donations. This is food donations.
Valued how, like the, the math backup behind this was a little disconcerting as well.
Well, it's, it's, I think it's essentially discounted from what the market price would be, otherwise of the Fresh Harvest goods, that they're donating $130,000 of food essentially by discounts or by donating the food within the City of Clarkston.
It's 130.
Yeah, I'm going to let Josh speak on that piece and then.
So I believe it's in the MOU, but that money would be calculated at wholesale prices. So that's not like retail prices, what it sold at in a grocery store. That's like the cheapest possible. You can get it directly from a farm, which is going to be way cheaper than, than anywhere else, especially because we have buying power and can get a lot more at a time. So it's, that's what it's tracking.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that. And, and just how did you calculate that? How would you calculate? I think that's what Councilwoman Hopkins was coming about because she knows and our, seeing what you've charged from your website and everything else, what is the formula and how are you calculating what you would do in terms of the donation piece? So that's, I think that's the clarity part.
Yeah, yeah. So, so what we get is when we're, when we're buying food for the, for the share of the harvest, what we do is we buy that food at wholesale price. And then we in turn sell that at like a, a 75 to 95% discount of a retail price. So for example, if you buy an apple at a grocery store and it's a dollar, you can buy it from the market for five cents. So that's, that's how the math from the customer side works. The math from the, how we're tracking where these, where these dollars are spent works is wholesale dollars. Like what did we actually pay for the food? And then in terms of where it is, like Mr. Carroll said, so the, what the MOU is tracking, and which you guys are welcome to put stipulations in the MOU, we're all for it, would be that much money guaranteed to be spent in Clarkston. Like if we spend $2,000 at the lakes, that's not tracked. That's just like freebies to nearby neighbors. This is for Clarkston. And so we're like, where the Cleveland example, the $5 million, they tracked it and they said 50% of that stuff did not even happen in the city. And they knew that going into it and it was still a good idea. And we're saying our, our whole point is we want to be in Clarkston. So yes, the lakes is great too, but that money that we're tracking is within the city. So that the city is guaranteed to get double its investment.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I've got a quick question, Josh, right there. You just broke the rule that the city manager said that the truck will be limited in this movement within the city limit. And you just said that you, if you go to outside the city limit, it would not be counted. But the motions say that, that until the 130 is exhausted, that you would not be, you would be limited to stay within the city limit.
Within 30021 was the motion.
Within the 30021? Why is that?
Well, they can move outside of the city list as long as they're within 30021, but the 130,000 donations has to be within the city. So if they want to go give a freebie to the lakes, or they want to go give a freebie to, you know, somewhere else, they can do that. That just doesn't count towards 130,000. And they can't go outside 30021 until they do the 130,000 and then they're free to, you know, move it where they want.
But with all due respect, the city attorney was talking about the city limits. He never said 30021.
So what we have is the current motion, just, just keep that in mind and we'll.
Yeah, yeah, we have discussion.
Yes, yeah, just, just, just make sure.
All right.
That was in the, that's what we wrote in the draft MOU. That's why he mentioned it. But we can change the draft MOU, so, yeah.
So I have a question. Is there, is there right now a sense of urgency to have this done today?
Yes, so for, for example, today is a perfect example. So we had, we had extra food come in that we weren't expecting from farms because sometimes that just happens. But like Envision, one of our biggest partners who's distributing it, they can't distribute anymore. And so that food, which normally goes straight into Clarkston, now we don't have a home for it. So it's probably going outside of Clarkston. And this market, we're trying to get it back up and running as fast as possible so that we can, so that we can serve Clarkston because that's where we live. Now, not that it's bad to give to downtown Atlanta, but we're a Clarkston business and so that's our, that's our goal.
But let me make sure I'm clear. So even if you have the food, you, it's nothing preventing you from the same setup that you had, like when you go to Willow Branch and the other places to do the food distribution. Is that correct or not?
I'm not sure I understand. Sorry.
So, so for example, you showed us photos from where you did food distribution. And you said, for example, you have a plentiful harvest of food right now. What would prevent you from doing that same setup? And the only reason why I'm asking this question is, I was listening to Councilwoman Hopkins. And my thing is, I don't want to restrict you. I don't want to restrict you. I want you to just go forth and multiply and do whatever. But as a city, we have to be mindful of how we spend the money. And that's why I'm asking you, is it a need that you have to have today? Where if we sat down and really sat back and thought about it from a regional perspective of how we address food insecurity, so that you, as Fresh Harvest, can grow and be what we want you to be as, as, as this community support center for us to help address food insecurities, when you look at it from a regional perspective? Because when you think about the issues that we're facing and we look at the food drives and everything else that we're doing, it's not just Clarkston. And so if we're really going to invest in saying that we're going to make a change and help the business to make a change, I don't want to think small. I want to make sure you grow and think big. And so how we address this from a bigger perspective. So that's why I'm asking this question because as Councilwoman Hopkins mentioned, how are we, how can we help you help everybody that we're trying to see who are going through this, this issue right now? And so there's, there's money, there's funding, there's other opportunities that if we look at how from a sustainability perspective, because not just what we do right now, is how from a plan are we doing this from a sustainability? How can we do this and make it where not only you are flourishing, but the people who you're supporting can flourish? And we're looking at how we expand that. And so that's, that is what, why I'm asking that question, because I don't want to put it, put you and stifle you. Right? Because if we doing it the way that we're saying, we're stifling you in a way. In a way, in a way. But if we look at it from the opportunity for you to get additional funding, the opportunity for you to get grants, and we collectively put this so that it is not just the van, it is how are you creating a program that is a sustainable program? I don't like just putting a piece. I like to see the entire project. And so that's why I'm asking you this question because I want you to succeed. This is part of this, of you succeeding. As a council, we can figure out how you want to talk about it, but I just want to put that out there because I'm committed to seeing how we can help you grow.
Absolutely. So to answer the, the question, the sustainability piece, this is one of the reasons we're asking for it this way while we do it, while we get grants for capital improvements. It's because that's how we remain sustainable. Rather than spending money, donations that normally would go to food on a capital improvement, we just get a grant for it. So that's how we grow. And then from the city's perspective, you're not worried about us, about an ongoing cost. This is a one-time thing, but you get the ongoing return on investment. So that's why we're thinking about it in that sort of sustainability way. And then in terms of why the truck, that again goes towards your, your questions are on sustainability. It's so that we can go to scale. Because what we're doing is we're, we're giving far more than we used to at those small markets. And so we just don't have the capacity to function the way that we did at those smaller markets. The truck allows it to go to stale, to quickly come into a place, keep all the food fresh so that it can then go on to another place. And, and that's where the, the truck comes in. Now, we could do it in a more unsustainable, non-scalable way and pay more people to, to do that. But you don't get the same return on your investment. That's less food in the hands of the people who need it because the money is going towards, it kind of wasted money as opposed to at-scale efficient system.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other comments?
I, I just want to also add to that. I agree with you, Madam Mayor, that I don't think even we have the interest on monitoring where the truck is going and trying to put a, I mean, LoJack on the car. It doesn't really make sense for the city trying to monitor individual businesses wherever they, especially when it's a car that's a mobile one. So I agree with the mayor that I also don't want you to have restrictions on where you want to move. Hopefully, when you are operating within the city limit, we want you to grow. But I also agree that this really need to be, there need to be more discussion and there need to be more conversation. And we, I, I honestly don't, don't agree that this is a viable usage of ARPA funding. But I am willing even to, to say that it would be a lot, it would make more sense to hammer out all those details. How are we going to be like accounting for every donation that you're doing? And all those questions need to be answered before we vote on this. That's just my feeling. Thank you.
Cash, yeah, I'm in line, you know, following with those, with the mayor and vice mayor. If we approve tonight, how long is it going to take the truck to be on operational?
It's a good question. It's always slower than what they tell you. We would love for it to be rolling in March. Maybe that's crazy. It probably is. I, I cannot give you an, an answer on that.
The reason I'm saying that is if we vote tonight, you don't know what's coming out of it, okay? But if you take, if you take the. But if you take, if you take the chance, you may get either way, yes or no? But if you take the advice of the mayor and plan and give more in- information, more detail, this, you know, agenda will, will be alive. So just want to give you that, keep, keep that in mind.
So my, my question, my question or response to the question is, I think that this was the time in the last meetings, I've been asking for input to change the draft MOU. We can change it to whatever you want it to say. I just haven't heard concrete things of, please do this. If as soon as I have those concrete things, change what you're doing from X to Y, done. Um, I just haven't heard um, a consensus on, it can only be 30021 or it can only be City of Clarkston, those sorts of things. I, I think that we're deciding tonight so that then it's done and, and we're open to the changes.
So I mean, would you feel better if we took off the 30021 requirement and just said they still have to pay in 130,000 within Clarkston? But as long as they do that, they can take the truck somewhere outside 30021? Is that the preference of council? Because I can amend my motion if people would rather me do it that way, but I didn't, I could, I was trying to get this in.
I was just following up a question on the, on the conversation.
And that was one of the issues we had is that they were servicing other areas. So we wouldn't want to take the 30021.
Leave that, okay, I'm fine with either way. I just, I heard a question about it, I didn't know if that was what people wanted to change.
All right, so we, yes.
Does the 130,000, like, does doubling the investment within City of Clarkston s- solve any of those questions? Like what exactly solves that question? Do you want it to be only?
The only thing for me is that there is no joint venture here. It's just a City of Clarkston venture. That's, that was my whole hangup. If we were actually working with DeKalb or Stone Mountain or Tucker, then we could pay a portion of that. And now we've all collectively funded this project. But it's just us. But we're not limiting who you can service until the 130,000 is paid. So I'm not understanding. So that was the only thing. If we could have collaborated with some other cities, counties, then it would have felt better as a city to give you $65,000.
Gotcha, so I think in response to the question, it's a great thing, I feel like for the, for the food to go everywhere, like you said, I, I agree. But in terms of detailing the MOU, we're, we're happy to make it whatever it needs to be during the duration of the grant. And then, you know, if you don't want us to service the lakes during the duration, that's okay. That, that's not great, but that's, you know, if that's the way it needs to be, then that's the way it needs to be.
Thank you, John. Okay, any other questions, comments, follow-up?
I have a few things I want to address.
Okay, and then we'll end that.
One, I, I think um, some of the concerns that have been raised are a little bit contradictory. So I'm a little confused as well. I think before the objections were, how on earth we know that it is not, um, you know, they're not giving food outside of 30021? That was the problem. Then the concern is, well, 30021 is limiting and so we need them to expand beyond it. And so um, I think for something that has gone through two work sessions and is now on its second that roll up for a vote, um, I do believe Mr. Deaton has um, created space for those questions to actually be answered. I've received numerous emails, um, you know, from him. Uh, I understand the rest of the council has as well. Um, and some of these concerns were, you know, have not, uh, you know, been brought up initially, I think, especially in terms of the joint venture. I think that's a great idea. So I just want to address that. I just want to also address uh, some of the questions on scalability. I think both of those are, are great concerns. I think the scalability piece is um, is, is critical. You know, a lot of organizations don't work well because they don't scale well. You know, someone tries to franchise, they franchise too fast. I'm not going to name names. We've got some, some ventures that happened in Atlanta recently that uh, made, made national news for, you know, for scaling a little quickly and not, not having their foundation built appropriately. And what uh, I think we have before us is actually the natural and healthy progression of scalability. Madam Mayor, I think you brought up some great points on that. You guys are wanting to scale your program into our community. The cab has a bunch of Clarkstons in it. You know, we're not talking about a fleet of 30 trucks, which would be amazing. Um, and I think that might be a next step, but more uh, maybe this is sort of the next version of a proof of concept of how a municipality can partner with a local business to serve its constituents. And, you know, for once maybe we can model and show DeKalb how it's done. And uh, I think that's a, an opportunity that we have, have before us. In terms of joint ventures, again, the original proposal wasn't to service DeKalb County, it was to service Clarkston. Um, I think it would make more sense if it were a multi-city initiative. Um, I would want to have seen a lot more detail on that. Um, and I think it would be great for us to see if this works and then approach our colleagues, well, y'all's colleagues at, at, at that time and, and Taker and, and even approach our commissioners and with a program that works, um, that, that can prove the innovation and, and partnership in Clarkston is like, we're, we're only hitting the tip of the iceberg in terms of what we can do. One thing I do want to address, and yeah, address this a little bit, um, just in terms of some of our existing food initiatives, is the opportunity that this provides us to sustain even our existing food distribution to people who aren't able to afford food. I know that Fresh Harvest is offered to, uh, to partner with the city and other ventures as well. My concern, you know, even though we have a large sum of money from ARPA, um, that sum of money is not infinite. It's not an infinity sign. It is a concrete dollar amount. And I think programs like this um, provide us the opportunity to ensure that the, th- those among us who have not quite gotten their feet underneath them uh, in terms of employment, uh, still have access to, to free food and can help sustain some of the existing work that Councilwoman Johnson, I believe Councilwoman Hopkins have um, been uh, been leading uh, in that regard. So I think, uh, while I do think it's great for us to think broad, to think big, I think every long journey starts with the first step. And that's what we have before us, is an opportunity to be the people who take that first step, um, who invest in this. And then from that, build a longer partnership involving more municipalities, involving the larger county um, in a way that improves uh, our, our neighbors' lives as well. So, thank you.
I'll just add one thing quickly then we can stop discussion is that the reason why I proposed 40 instead of 65 is I leaving the door open for collaboration with the cab or Tucker or other cities down the road. So I'm not saying that, you know, we're providing the entire amount ourselves. And I, I do think it's a good idea to potentially collaborate in the future in this and other projects with them. So I don't feel like that's precluded at all by voting today.
All right, so we, uh, in this discussion, thank you all for your comments and your follow-up. And thank you again for your follow-up and your consistency and trying to make sure we got the message in the word. Josh, so council, you've heard the motion is for that 40,000 out of ARPA funds. And we will work on the MOU and have our attorney to work on the MOU. And if they can apply for the 15,000 through the business and it's at the discretion of staff, if it passes or doesn't in terms of qualifying, as well as staying within the 30021 zip code. That means City of Clarkston and right around the greater Clarkston area until the 130,000 agreed upon amount of donations has been already actually donated. So you ready for the question? Ready for the question? Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Oh, Lord.
Yeah, you are. Let's see.
Okay. I'm gonna go out. Are we waiting on you?
She said aye, I thought, right?
Did I say it? Oh, no, I didn't say, oh, okay, I was just, I was like, oh, it's me, okay. Oh, it's three to three.
Yeah, three to three.
I'm gonna say aye. I'm gonna say aye. Okay, motion passed.
One more question?
Yes.
Who will let me know next steps?
Uh, Ms. Uh, our city manager and the attorney.
Yes, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the next item, which is G1 2022 budget adoption, which is the 2022 budget presentation with the interim city manager. Ms. Cowie.
Madam Mayor, this is the proposed fiscal year 2022 operating enterprise fund budget. This is a public hearing for adoption as well, December 7th, 2021. The adoption process, we had two public hearings. The first public hearing was November 30th at a special call meeting in our work session meeting. The second is the December 7th, 2021 regular city council meeting. The adoption of the operating enterprise and fund budget, city council, regular city council meeting, December 7th. The proposed fiscal year 2022 operating enterprise budget preface. City of Clarkson is a city council, city manager form of government. City of Clarkson population is 14,756 and we have 45 full-time employees. Right now, we're dealing with economic limitations, our cost of living expenses, um, the change in industries and retaining our employees as where, as, as well as our businesses. For fiscal year 2022, all funds budget, excuse me, 12,973,624. That is, I'm sorry. That is a total for the fiscal year 2022 budget of 12,973,624 and it is a 12.8% increase over the fiscal year 2021 budget of 11,508,463. Currently, for the proposed fiscal year 2022 operating and enterprise fund budget, the general fund is 7,153,493. That makes up property taxes as 61.3%, other taxes 29.4%, fines and forfeitures is 4.9% and permits at an estimated of 3.6%. Again, the proposed fiscal year 2022 operating and enterprise budget fund is all revenue funds, which includes spots, the general fund, sanitation, stormwater, grants, federal seizures and host funds. The enterprise fund budget, general funds expenditures, the 7,153,493 is um, encompasses um, capital projects, the unallocated amount of 100, it's actually as of today, 131,490. Public works, building and grounds, parks, our debt service, planning, economic development, community action projects, municipal court and police. Again, that is a, the total of the fiscal year budget of 7,153,493 is a 5.3 increase over the fiscal year 2021 general fund budget of 6 million plus. Sorry about that. The City of Clarkson's milish rate history, in 2011, we were at 14.0 and the proposed, it was a decrease to 2021 at 14.89 with the proposed being at 14.89 in 2022. Higher your taxes calculated. All property in Georgia is taxed at an assessment rate of 40% of the full market appraised value. Exemptions are such as homestead reduces the taxable value of your property and the taxable value is multiplied by the mid- milish rate to produce city property taxes. This is the 10-year gross digest, digest history. That was at its lowest at in 2013 at 64,729 and with an increase for 2021 of 253,170 plus, 7726. The proposed fiscal year 2022 operating enterprise fund budget mission, vision and mission is to, is to be a, an effective, efficient city processes and services, continue transparency and public access, continuous reviews of our expenses to foster public-private collaboration and partnership, increase our grants and ensure all revenue is received and accounted for. City full-time employees, administration is five, police has 21, municipal court has four, public works is 11.6, the point six is a part-time employee. Planning, economic development is three, which totals the 45.6 full-time employees plus that point six for the full-time for the City of Clarkson. In administration, with a budget of 1,159,801, they serve as the executive authority with five full-time employees. They're responsible for daily city operation, personnel and project management. The police at 2,343,631 is to continue to foster a welcoming, safe and secure city, to conduct criminal investigations, to patrol, to serve as a community-oriented neighbor, to foster community-oriented neighborhoods, to be professional and trained with their 21 full-time employees and to fill those vacancies that we currently have and to support special events and projects and enhance our service delivery levels. Municipal court has four full-time employees with a chief court clerk, records and two court clerks. Chief court, she's a chief court, records and two court clerks, manage the court proceedings that is serves under the judge, with the judge, solicitor and public defender and to include, increase revenue activity. Public works, parks, building and grounds at 1,208,534 has the 11.6 full-time employees. Their mission is to um, continue ongoing enhanced maintenance and beautification of our streets, right away in parks for little control and abatement, um, comprehensive management of our lawns and weeds and trees to a certain extent. Street repairs, manage our sweeping and paving for Mollin Park, Friendship Forest, 40 Oaks and our nature preserves and any additional maintenance and to train for alternative landscaping and education, building maintenance that will oversee our contracts at our six city facilities and also to support our special events. Planning, economic development. At 546,500, we'll continue promoting the City of Clarkson with three full-time employees, a director, a code enforcement officer and now an economic development coordinator for marketing, advertising and outreach to encourage development and redevelopment in our downtown areas, to focus on telling the story of Clarkston, to retain and enhance our existing businesses, to promote and foster diversity. In our city center, our multi and single fam- multi and single family developments, co-compliance enforcement to enhance community standards, again with outreach and beautification, to enhance our contracts with plan reviews and inspections and to support with collaborations with our planning and zoning board, historical preservation and our downtown development authority. and to support with collaborations with our planning and zoning board, historical preservation, and our downtown development authority. The community action projects include CDF Tell Me A Story, Sagal Radio, the Clarkston Community Festival Cultural Fest, the Clarkston Community Center, our recreation programs, special events, and our five advisory task groups in our urban ag environment, environment. At one hundred and seventy-one thousand five hundred. All funds debt services at seven hundred and ninety-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-five. The debts include our police vehicles, um, Serta Street skate loans, a new vehicle for the city manager, urban ag, again, environmental, um, matters, the five advisory task groups at fifty thousand, recreation programs, special events in the Clarkston Community Center, and the general fund at seven hundred and forty-three thousand one hundred and seventy-nine, I'm sorry. The proposed fiscal year 2022 Operating Enterprise Budget Fund expenditures has a total spots fund expenditures of four million fifty thousand six hundred and ninety-eight. Stormwater, three hundred and fifty-three, three hundred and fifty-three thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine is to utilize that fund balance of eighty-three thousand for a planned project with partitions, and that's the equivalent of each unit of sixty-three dollars and ninety-six cent for stormwater for our residents. Sanitation, to continue our residential collection for our over a thousand addresses in the City of Clarkston, and we'll have approximately fifty thousand dollars in our fund balance at the end of fiscal year twenty-one, and that budget is proposed at two hundred and fifty-three thousand five hundred and seven. Grants, with our revenues of three hundred and sixty-three, three hundred and sixty-six thousand seven hundred and eighteen, our expenditures are matched, which means that our revenues that we have are balanced with our expenditures of three hundred and sixty-six thousand seven hundred and eighteen. Our proposed fiscal year 2022 Operating Enterprise Budget, all funds budget, it's twelve million nine hundred and seventy-three thousand six hundred and twenty-four. Madam Mayor, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Calwee, and thank you, staff, for always doing a wonderful job in terms of providing the information and making sure that it is comprehensible to not only to us, but to the community, so thank you. At this time, we'll take any questions, or we'll entertain a motion in terms of this item, and then move into discussion.
Is it a public hearing, I believe?
Yeah, we have public hearing, thank you, Vice Mayor. So, at this time, we have the public hearing. At this time, anyone from the public who wishes to speak about the budget can do so at this time. Ms. Calwee, do we have anyone online?
The one that registered for the public comment is Mr. Ian Metford.
Mr. Ian Metford?
No, that would be me.
Amy Metford.
Ms. Amy Metford.
Too many to keep up with, I get it. Um, if the vision of the Clarkston City Government and Budget is to increase public access and transparency, as you just said, you guys really need to consider putting some things in your budget for translation services and getting things into other languages. It's extremely difficult to have public access if a large percentage of your public does not speak English as its first language, especially considering you've got planning and zoning rewrite going forward, and there will be several more opportunities for public meetings and public input coming forward in 2022. The city ought to do something, it's your responsibility, to make this accessible to other people. So, I would highly encourage you to please put in the budget somewhere specified out for translation services. Relying on volunteers is, honestly, it's irresponsible because it, it's unreliable. You won't always know if they're gonna get there, they, they won't always be available to do it. It's something the city needs to do to increase its public access with people. So, that was my biggest comment on the budget.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments at this time?
None that have signed up previously, Madam Mayor.
Okay, anyone in the chambers, public comments? Hearing none, we will now close, I'm gonna say it one more, give you three shots. Any more public comments related to the budget? Any more public comments related to the budget? Any more public comments related to the budget? Hearing none, the public comments and public hearing session is closed on the 2022 Proposed Operating and Enterprise Budget Fund Budget. So, at this time, we will move on to item C, which is the council adopt the year fiscal year 2022 Proposed Operating and Enterprise Fund Budget Ordinance. I'll entertain a motion, yes, Vice Mayor Yasu?
We, I move that we adopt the fiscal year 2022 Proposed Operating and Enterprise, uh, Fund Budget in the amount of twelve million nine hundred and seventy-three thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Is there a second?
I second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the fiscal year 2022 Proposed Operating and Enterprise Fund Budget at, and let me get back to the page, I'm so sorry. The twelve thousand nine hundred and seventy, twelve million, twelve million nine hundred and seventy-three thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars. You ready for, um, discussion, is any discussion?
I mean, I, I agree with everything in the budget, so I'd be happy to vote for this budget. Only question I had is, I believe there's still one hundred and thirty-one thousand in discretionary?
It is.
So, do we want to allocate some of that tonight, or none of that tonight, or leave that for the next council, or what, what is?
Leave that next council?
All right.
Leave it to the next.
I was gonna suggest one, one option, um, that I thought, I can't remember who I've talked to, who's, was this idea, is we could allocate it as, um, sort of a budget for each council member, and the upcoming council member for special projects. That would be one option, just divide it six, seven ways. It provides opportunity is, has been, you know, for collaboration on larger projects, it's something that's been brought up, and then it allows for, you know, and would, would be something to spend on your own inauguration party or, or a campaign, obviously, but it would be, it would be something that would allow, you know, for, uh, you know, projects that benefit the community, for, you know, perhaps translation services or something like that, so that's something we'd be amenable to, or we just want to kick it to the next group.
I think we're gonna kick it to the next group, that's a nice way to give a prize, I saw that, I saw that.
I just, I just want to mention that, um, I think it's a very, um, important, uh, point that was raised by, uh, in the public comment by Ms. Metford. I think there is already, um, budget per department, especially by our court department, which there is already, uh, money that is in there since we passed the resolution last time that translation services is provided, and, um, um, I think, uh, I, I'm not sure how we can do it, trying to translate agenda items, and, um, and which language are we gonna choose? I, I mean, I know this is really very difficult, uh, as much as, uh, yeah, I mean, um, I would like to see that, but I think, uh, at this point, there is already money that, uh, I just want people to know that there is already money that is already dedicated for translation in departments, especially particularly within our court department. So, uh, just let them know that this, this is not like we don't have money at all. So, there is already money in there, and it's already been used right now, every year, that every person that doesn't have, uh, doesn't speak English is always provided with a translation, with a translation services by our court, uh, courts, by the judge, basically. So, um, but I think we definitely need to do more, um, uh, especially in terms of messaging with, uh, with COVID. Councilmember, uh, Hopkins was trying to do something the last time. Unfortunately, she wasn't successful at getting some translation done, uh, but I think we definitely could use our power money we have, thus specifically for that purpose. So, we need to push, and we need to let people know that there is already money. So, people understand that there is money for translation, and they could recommend us and tell us what languages are being least served, uh, or which communities are being least served, so they know that there is money in there that we could certainly translate certain, uh, important, uh, message for them. I think that's pretty much what I want to say, but I think, uh, this budget is not set in rocks, we can always amend it. The new council can, when, when, when we, uh, when we come back, uh, January, February, we definitely gonna, we definitely wanna amend it and, uh, change it, or as ne, as needed, basically. But this looks great, I really want to thank for all the work that the staff did on this, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and.
Yeah, as far as the translation goes, on a plain text, it's easy to put multiple languages, but the financial documents, it's highly unlikely that you have to put it this, unless you really concise, you don't say, this is just a fund, so, you know, one, multiple line items, but the details that we're doing up here, there is no way they can, you know, that, it will be very expensive and unattainable, thank you.
Thank you, and we do already have some allocated in the ARPA four translation, correct?
For marketing services, for outreach?
Yeah, yeah, okay, all right, so, um, and as we said, this is a budget that we can have that additional funding, we can, uh, make adjustments later on. So, at this time, any more questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to approve the twenty-two Proposed Operating and Enterprise Fund Budget Ordinance in the amount of twelve million, because I don't want to give Ms. Calwee a heart attack, I heard her over there when she gasped. Twelve million nine hundred and seventy-three thousand six hundred and twenty-four. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for continuing to do the great work. We'll move on to G2, which is to approve the SPLAS zero-four B and C Roland Road Diet Roland Street Road Closure Options, Ms. Calwee?
Madam Mayor, the purpose of this agenda item was to approve additional options for SPLAS oh zero-four B and C Roland Street Road Diet, Roland Street Road Closure Options from Market Street to Norman Road that was to substitute to the construction of the Federal Highway Administration-required streetscape sidewalks on the south of Roland Street. Madam Mayor?
Okay, did you have any questions? I know we have Mr. Kaiser here.
Uh, I just want to have a quick question, so which side were you recommending? If it was one-way, should it be westwards, to your recommendation was?
I'm trying to remember, so I think the recommendation was from east to west?
Yeah, because you said right in, right out, that would be.
Yeah, so it's one lane, it's one-way, east to west, and it would be, the driveway would be right in, right out. And the other lane would be the dual-purpose lane, which is for bikers and pedestrians, with a median down the middle. That was one of the options, right, we have five options.
Right.
All right, so, if you want, so that would be, that would be from Norman to Market, one-way street from east to west, and then the other lane would be for bikers and pedestrians, that's one option, that's sixty-nine thousand, I think the dollar number was.
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven, so there were small median in the middle, you know, eighteen inches wide, twelve inches high, that's one option. And then, and then I think, Ms. Mayor, you asked me to reach out to, uh, Zufan, and she did respond back, and her response was that she wanted option four.
She likes four instead?
She liked four.
Did we get that in writing?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's cheaper too.
All right, so option four. Okay. Any other question?
Uh, I just want to ask Councilmember Hopkins, she was the one who was very concerned, so I would like to hear from her.
She's left.
Oh, she stepped out?
Yeah.
Yeah, she had to step out. So, I guess this is, I know she had some concerns about that, um, and you said the owner is fine with that, that change.
Yes, I, I emailed her and texted her, and then she responded to me, what was it, it was Sunday or Monday? And then I forwarded on to, uh, the city manager. Oh, yeah, her and her sister together.
Okay, okay.
Yes, absolutely. Had a very long conversation with her and her sister, which is why we go to four.
So, the side, the sidewalk, it's gonna be a sidewalk, correct, you're gonna have?
Yeah, there's no, so there's no sidewalk, so, remember, option four is from her driveway, her driveway stays a hundred percent open. Her driveway out to Market is, road's completely open. Then from her driveway down to Norman is closed with bollards.
Right.
Hundred percent closed.
I'm struggling with that, I'm, I'm struggling, I, I'm struggling with the, the closure, because we have done, we have made that little corridor so many changes right there, and, and I'm, I'm concerned with the, the blocking it off, especially as active as sometimes we are, and not having that street is, having that street to be accessible. That, that's a concern for me, because, you know, when, when I'm.
So, you're saying you'd rather have two?
Yeah, I, I'm just, I'm concerned that, you know, we, we're looking at it conceptually, but, you know, when you get down to it, it's not working, and sometimes I'm looking at what happened with Rogers Street, because we looked at it conceptually, and then it got out there, and it just wasn't kind of what we thought it was gonna be, and my only concern is now we've reduced the traffic on the main part of Roland. We have this chicane stuff on Rogers, and how is all of that gonna play with traffic? We want to make sure we have that bike lane, but we also have to make sure from, from how we deal with traffic that we're, we're really covering, and so, Mr. Kaiser, make me feel like we doing this, make, help me.
You know, when we all started this back in two thousand thirteen, I remember Councilman Jean, Councilwoman Jean Brown, two thousand twelve, maybe two thousand thirteen, and she made a recommendation to council, council adopted a green street policy. I remember that quite clearly, it was very radical at the time, compared with Decatur, uh, on the things that they were doing back then, and the whole idea of green streets is to reduce, to make green, to make the streets more accessible to bikers, pedestrians. That was the idea, pure and simple, and also to reduce the environmental impacts from stormwater runoff, the stormwater, uh, program. And so, that all really resulted in everything we're doing now, narrowing the streets, changing the alignment of Roland Street, closing part of Roland, putting chicanes in, the whole world of traffic mitigation, to reduce traffic volume, to, to not affect neighborhoods, but to slow up traffic, and to make these, these streets more pedestrian-friendly. That was a whole idea, and so, in my opinion, as an engineer doing this for a few years, either approach, whether it's a one-lane of Roland Street or closing part of Roland Street, it both serves the purpose of pedestrian safety, in my mind. I believe, and I told Zufan and her sister this, that a one-lane road is not going to impact her business. She does not have a restaurant there. She does not have a high-volume commercial business. The folks that come to her office know exactly where they're going, and they usually, from what I've seen after all these years, they go down Market, and, or they go down, uh, Church Street, or they go down, you know, there's ways of getting there. Making a one-way street is not gonna affect her business, nor take away the value of her property at all. But the reason I presented the, all the options is because that is what I was instructed to do a couple of years ago, and I did that.
Okay.
Uh, and just one last question. I'm not very good with directions. So when you say east to west, is that from?
Norman.
Norman to Market?
Towards Market Street.
Okay. But not from Market to Norman?
No.
Okay.
No.
And the other, last question I had, so is there enough funds in the SPLAS budget to do either the 67 or the 17 option?
It was already in the budget.
Okay, so either, any of these could fit in this current SPLAS budget?
Yes, yes.
So at this time, we'll entertain a motion for this particular item. Somebody like to make that motion? On which option and how we deal with it? Yes, Vice Mayor Yasu?
I have a motion, Madam Mayor. I move that to approve this SPLAS 04 BNC Roland Road Diet Roland Street Road Closure Option Two, which is one-lane traffic, east to west, and one lane for bikes, pedestrians. Traffic flow should be one-way in the western direction to reduce confusion on right-in, right-out driveways and the rest, I guess.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and second that we approve the SPLAS 04 BNC Roland Road Diet Roland Street Road Closure Option Two, which was the east and west. Make sure I get that one right.
Yes, east to west.
Yes, yes, okay. Any more discussion?
Yeah, just like.
Councilman Perkins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I've sort of weighed, weighed this over the last several weeks. And I think one concern I couldn't quite get over with option four was just the added confusion, I think, which it sounds like we're all in agreement on. As, as someone who, you know, does bike and, and is sort of very, you know, very aware of the dangers bikers face, as well as is motorist, I think, that, you know, the more confusion that we can reduce in terms of road closures and, and what direction of roads and who gets to ride where, I think I'm a lot more comfortable with the number two option than the number four. Especially hearing it doesn't sound like it would have an adverse effect on the business owner as well, which I think is an important thing to consider.
Any other comments?
I totally agree, and a lot of the businesses, they do have access from Norman. Some of them have access from Market. So there's really, and now there is gonna be another one way, so there is really, it will not, the impact is gonna be extremely very minor. So I, that's why, even though it would have been a lot easier to do, to block it just like it was planned, but it would add confusion. I mean, people don't know this was closed, and then it would be, you know, people trying to back up and all, and this. So it would be a lot easier. I agree totally that, that's, that's why I think we would probably be fair with option two.
Okay, and budget-wise, we're okay because we've already had that correct. All right, so budget, we're fine. Any more discussion?
And then one, one question is for the sake of asking it too. Would there be any case, and we have had events where we have closed that road, would there be any case where having the option to have a traffic-free street all the way down would, would keep us from having events in the future, just as a city? Is there any concern?
I don't think so, because we're gonna do Bike Month in May.
There you go.
We'll probably do it on the other side anyway, because that's a side close to City Hall.
Right. That's right, that's right. There you go. Okay, any other question? Are you ready? Well, any more discussion? Are you ready for the question?
Yes.
All in favor of approving the SPLAS 04 BNC Roland Road Diet Roland Street Road Closure Option Number Two, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay? Any abstentions? Motion pass. Thank you all again. So we're gonna proceed with G3, which is to approve the Roland Street and Wagner Street relocation agreement. P1 L10472 between the City of Clarkston and Georgia Power. Ms. Calwee?
Madam Mayor, due to the, due to the construction of SPLAS 04 BNC Roland Street Road Diet Project, Roland Street and Wagner Street Project, it will be necessary for the Georgia Power to adjust existing facilities with an estimated cost of $37,285. In accordance with the franchise agreement with Georgia Power, the city is responsible for 90% of the estimated cost of the relocation expenses at $33,556.50. Madam Mayor?
Okay, Ms. Calwee? We can't, we can't do something with those charging stations or something?
These are not the charging stations.
I know, I know, I know. Any, at this time, we'll entertain a motion for this item.
I move that we approve the relocation agreement between the City of Clarkston, Georgia Power for the SPLAS 04 BNC Roland Street Road Diet Project.
Okay, is there a second? It's been properly moved and second that we approve the agreement with the relocation for P1 L10472 between the City of Clarkston and Georgia Power. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion? Question? Okay, good. Ready for the question? All in favor to approve the agreement for the Roland Street and Rogers Street relocation agreement, P1 L10472 between the City of Clarkston and Georgia Power, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay? Any abstentions? Motion pass.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Can I just say, when we implement it, to please make sure we give the owner of that home next to this, to this pole, whatever, to give him ample time to be ready and just to communicate with them better, so we don't want to get into.
Yeah, it's the same house. We're just moving it from point A to point B, but we'll give them, we'll talk to them ahead of time.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Kaiser, I know we've said this, but we gotta make sure in terms of how we communicate updates and changes and when we're gonna do anything. Let's just make sure, I don't know if we gotta have somewhere on the website or something that we do it, just so that people are alert, because, you know, we wanna make sure as we're doing all this construction, because some people have been going through construction for the last three years, three or four years. And so as a courtesy, I want us to just to make sure that we extend enough communication to make sure people feel comfortable as we're going through transition.
Well, as we, as we have done, as you know, we send out letters like you wouldn't believe all the time to everybody. And so maybe what city manager and I can do is, maybe every two weeks or something, maybe we can give a short little paragraph of where we are in every project, and you might, you might want to put that on the website.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser.
Well, I wanna give her extra work, because so she has enough to do.
But I requested this information about a mayor, so that is fine with me.
Okay.
Again, transparency to our residents.
Okay, that's, that's all we wanna do, is make sure, and, you know, if we have to do emergency alerts or whatever, we can let them know, and that'll be part of the texting thing, so they'll be okay. All right, next item, which would be G4. Approve the SPLAS 04 BNC Roland Road Diet Change Order Request for Storm Lane Installation at 48847 and at 851 Roland Street. Ms. Calwee?
Madam Mayor, Roland Street was constructed over 100 years ago without an adequate storm drainage system. Currently, one set of catch basins exist on Roland Street from North Indian Creek to Lovejoy Road between the properties of 847 and 851 Roland Street. The consultant engineering team is recommending the construction of two new catch basins, the installation of 220 linear feet of 18-inch HDPE pipe parallel to the roadway connecting to the existing storm line between 847 and 851 Roland Street to reconstruct the concrete driveways. The estimated cost of the change order is $28,471. Madam Mayor?
Thank you, Ms. Calwee. At this time, I will entertain a motion for this item. Anybody?
I have a motion, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor Yasu?
I move that we to approve SPLAS 04 BNC Roland Street Road Diet Change of Order Request for Storm Line Installation at 847 and 851 Roland Street.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been properly moved and second to approve the SPLAS 04 BNC Roland Street Road Diet Change Order Request for Storm Line Installation at 847 and at 851 Roland Street. Any further discussion? So Mr. Kaiser, we won't have to do anything else in terms of any more storm waters? This, is this the only storm water issue we have? I just want to make sure.
Yes, it is.
Okay, okay, all right. Thank you. Any other discussion? You ready for the question? All in favor to approve SPLAS 04 BNC Roland Street Road Diet Change Order Request for Storm Line Installation at 847 and 851 Roland Street, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay? Any abstentions? Motion pass. Thank you all again. Now we'll proceed on to G5, which is to approve the SPLAS 04 Market Street Sidewalks and Resurfacing and Carroll Park Resurfacing Change Order Request for the Market Street Resurfacing and Sidewalk Project with Unincorporated DeKalb County. Ms. Calwee?
Madam Mayor, DeKalb County has agreed to reimburse the City of Clarkston for the construction costs associated with SPLAS 08 Project extending into unincorporated DeKalb County in the amount of $136,803.82. The additional scope of work will include a reset of the granite curb, asphalt milling, resurfacing sidewalks, drainage, including junction boxes, roadway signage, and traffic calming. The extended scope of work includes a 45-day extension for the modifications with a revised project duration of 195 calendar days. Madam Mayor?
Thank you, Ms. Calwee. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. Yes, Vice Mayor Yasu?
All right, I move that we approve the SPLAS 8 Market Street Sidewalk and Resurfacing and Carroll Park Resurfacing Change Order Request for Market Street Resurfacing and Sidewalk Project with unincorporated DeKalb County and the construction cost associated with the continuation of the project extension into unincorporated DeKalb County.
Is there a second?
I second.
It's been properly moved and second that we approve the SPLAS 8 Market Street Sidewalks and Resurfacing and Carroll Park Resurfacing Change Order Request for Market Street Resurfacing and Sidewalk Project with the unincorporated DeKalb County and the construction costs associated with the continuation of the project extending into unincorporated DeKalb County. We'll entertain discussion at this point. First of all, I wanna say thank you to Commissioner Steve Bradshaw. We asked him, he went and lobbied for this for us with DeKalb County, so we wanna say thank you. So all the residents down on Market Street, send him thank you, thank you, thank you notes, okay? And so we appreciate that, and that's a wonderful collaboration that we can do with our unincorporated commissioners, and when they step up, if they step up. So $100,000 out of his budget, that's a wonderful thing. So thank you, Commissioner Steve Bradshaw. Yes, Vice Mayor Yasu?
I definitely wanna say also, I really thank our staff in terms of initiating the conversation. I actually, I think I was one of the people who actually wanted to be one side only. I didn't like the idea of moving from one side to another side, so I actually was in the same, with the same idea of reaching out to DeKalb County, and I'm glad that it came to fruition, and we are gonna be collaborating with DeKalb County, and I also wanna thank Commissioner Bradshaw.
I definitely echo that. Thank Commissioner Bradshaw. I'd also like to thank the mayor for reaching out and the staff for reaching out. I think I agree with the vice mayor, that makes the project much better if we can have a consistent sidewalk all the way through instead of having to cut across. I think it makes it easier for pedestrians to come from the Market Street area to downtown.
Thank you, thank you, thank you all. Any other comments? Okay, no other comments, no other questions, no other discussion? You ready for the question? All right. All in favor to approve the SPLAS 08 Market Street Sidewalks and Resurfacing and Carroll Park Resurfacing Change Order Request for the Market Street Resurfacing and Sidewalk Project with Unincorporated DeKalb County and the construction costs associated with the continuation of project extending into unincorporated DeKalb County, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay? Any abstentions? Motion pass. Thank you all. We've already had in terms of consent agenda, item G6. We will proceed to item G7, which is to approve allocating ARPA funds for an outdoor calisthenic gymnasium at local park. Vice Mayor Yasu?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. And we did discuss this thoroughly at the work session. And as we stated at the work session again, the idea is to, to add more facilities and more equipments at our local park, particularly at Mylon Park right now, and to install some basic calisthenic equipments. And right now, the consensus, I mean, the, the recommendation from our staff, and I really wanna thank our staff for all the work in terms of getting the price of the equipments, is $13,000, and I, I think that's a fair amount of money, and it's gonna, the source of the fund is gonna be from our ARPA funding. And from the conversation, we heard from the community as well, I would like to ask to keep, just like in the agenda, the proposal was up to $25,000. And I would like to add to that to also upgrade existing equipments and add more calisthenic equipment, and not to exceed in the amount of $25,000. There were some questions about where we're gonna put them. I honestly, I can't really, I'm not an expert where places or things are placed. I would really leave that to our staff to consult with experts or engineers or where things can fit. But my wish is to make the park seamless and to use the areas that are not heavily utilized and not to congest it in one area, but I, I think that's really gonna be micromanaging. I don't wanna micromanage our staff. I really would, just to set the amount up to 13,000 to be used for the calisthenic equipment, and, and the rest up to $25,000 to upgrade our existing equipments and fix whatever we have. And if more money is needed, I definitely would strongly encourage our staff to let us know if that $25,000 is not enough to fix whatever is in there and to upgrade the, to upgrade whatever we could put in more equipments in there.
Okay, Vice Mayor Yasu, thank you. And just, just before we go into that motion, I was gonna ask, Ms. Calwee, do we already have funding allocated to address issues in terms of equipment and upgrading of equipment?
For our parks?
Yes, for our parks.
I don't see. For, for in our parks.
In parks.
Madam Mayor, we are actually gonna use ARPA funding, because ARPA funding is definitely eligible to be used to upgrading our existing outdoor activities. The overall is to encourage existing and new outdoor activities for our residents. So the upgrading would be part of making our facility better for our outdoor activities for our residents. So the money, I mean, if we have already in the budget, I would definitely also consider that, but first, we're gonna use the $25,000 from ARPA to upgrade and also add more equipments.
So then as a council, we're gonna vote if we're gonna do that, okay?
Yes, absolutely.
Make sure we say it that way.
Absolutely. I mean, we are not, right now, we're not taking any money from our, we're not talking about the money from the budget. We're talking about money from ARPA, up to $25,000, to be used to upgrade existing equipment and add more calisthenic equipments.
Okay, not a problem. We can go ahead in terms of creating that motion, just to make sure in terms of that, okay?
I'll make motion.
All right, make that motion. Alright, make that motion.
I move to allocate American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds for the purchase of outdoor calisthenic gymnasium equipment to be erected at local park, Mylon Park, and also upgrade equipment, existing equipments at Mylon Parks in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Nice second.
Is it in the amount of twenty-five thousand or not to exceed the amount of twenty-five?
Not to exceed in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you, and it's been seconded, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve ARPA funds for the purchase of outdoor calisthenic equipment and upgrades to equipment in Mylon Park, not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. Is there any further discussion? Yeah, you have a question?
More concerned, I'm wondering if we might want to tweak the wording of the motion through an amendment, because right now, there's twenty-five thousand, it's mentioned separately, and I think just the language of it, you know, might be a little confusing.
Okay.
I think in terms of making the motion itself, it could be up to fifty thousand, because of the way that it was worded, it was twenty-five thousand dollars for calisthenic equipment, and then in order to upgrade existing equipment, and then you mentioned twenty-five thousand again, and so I just want to make sure.
No.
It should have been just not to.
Thirteen thousand was for calisthenic equipment. That's the staff's recommendation. Am I correct, Ms. Calwee?
Yes, it was the calisthenic equipment for thirteen thousand, and it was to use the remaining amount, not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
To upgrade, yes.
So, twelve thousand for possible park upgrade, thirteen thousand.
So, let's, let's go back and make sure from the motion that it's clear that you got thirteen thousand for your calisthenics, calisthenics, and then the remaining of the twenty-five thousand towards any upgrades.
I can do that.
Is that fine? Does that cover?
You could simplify it. Twenty-five thou, up to twenty-five thousand dollars for calisthenics and things.
Okay, I move to approve erecting, I'm sorry. This, where is it? I move to approve allocating ARPA funds for an outdoor calisthenic gymnasium equipment at Mylon Park in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars, and also to allocate twelve thousand dollars for upgrading existing equipments at Mylon Park, not to ex, or the total, not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, is that a second for that one?
A second.
Okay, so it's been properly moved and seconded to approve allocating ARPA funds for an outdoor calisthenic equipment on a Mylon Park in the amount of thirteen thousand, and also to allocate twelve thousand for upgrading existing equipment at, at, at the, the park, at Mylon Park, not to exceed the total of twenty-five thousand. Is that correct?
Yes.
Any discussion? You ready for the question?
Yeah, I would say, I just, you know, appreciate Mr. Ian Medford, who may or may not be still on the call, just for coming and speaking on this agenda, and I think it's encouraging to me to see any time that our youth want to engage in the political process and make their voice heard. It makes me even more excited that we can immediately respond to that in a very tangible way. So, I'm sure the Medfords, if one of their three is not present, can relay that message later
Okay.
in the morning.
Alright, so Mr. Medford is, is changing the world. Thank you. Okay, any other discussion? Alright, you ready for the question? Okay, all in favor to approve allocating ARPA funds for an outdoor calisthenic equipment at Mylon Park in the amount of thirteen thousand, and also to allocate twelve thousand for upgrading existing equipments at Mylon Park not to exceed the total of twenty-five thousand, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? No, any abstentions? Motion pass, and we are moving, moving, moving. So, we will get to G eight was part of the consent agenda, and now we're at G nine, which is to approve amending the current process of adding items to an agenda by the mayor and city council members. And I think this was Vice Mayor Yasu.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And this is basically to, to make our existing process to be qualified, and also to make it in a way that we can work in a collaborative fashion, where agenda items are right now set when with one council member proposing, and then second council member seconding. However, when we vote, we, we need four votes or a majority vote to pass anything on, on the agenda. So, which means we're going to have so many agenda items, and sometimes we have over ten, sometimes twenty agenda items just clutter the agenda, and our residents stay up long, and they just lose interest and they leaving us. And a lot of times, a lot of the agenda items don't go nowhere, and we already have existing committee system to actually discuss ideas. So, so there, the, the recommendation was, my recommendation was to actually add, just like the mayor needs two people, I would like to also, all the council members, the same as the mayor, to also get another two more people to put anything on the agenda. So, that way, it will be fair for the, the mayor and the council will have the same, the same rules applied to them, and that way, they could also reach to the mayor if they need, so that, that, that makes it to pa, to put anything on the agenda, that would require, instead of two people, it would require three people, and that includes the mayor. So, it doesn't change anything when it comes to the mayor, because right now, the mayor needs two more council members to put anything on the agenda. So, that doesn't change. The only change is the requiring of one more additional council member, and that actually makes agenda items move quicker, and that way, we don't have to discuss things that doesn't have any consensus. And instead, those things could be discussed at committee levels, and they could be hammered out at committee levels and build the consensus that way before they come to the council. And I definitely would, would consider compromises as we discuss, but or even, I am also willing to listen from incoming council as well, but I will do that as we start the discussion, but that's what we have in front of us right now. And Councilmember Johnson, I would like to see if you have anything you want to add to that.
Um, no, well, yeah, I think we should table this or postpone it until the newly elected and really elected council members come on board.
I got you, and we discussed that once. We would like to see what we can do, but and, and other idea that I had was, so if a council member, right now, we all have one votes. So, just like the same way also, when we put things on the agenda, I would say you can put up to one agenda item if you feel like this is very urgent with one member, with one person only. But if you want to put more than one agenda item per, because we have six people. So, if every city council member puts in one agenda item per month, that makes it six agenda items plus whatever our staff is going to put in. So, that way, we still have a chance, we, everybody got a chance to put one agenda item per month. And that way, we can minimize the number of agenda items that are placed per month by by, by one council member. So, so we still, he was, the one council member will still have a chance to put one agenda item with the help of one person. But if you want to put more than one agenda item per month, I think you should have the support of three people, including the mayor. That's just another compromise that we can put. And if the council feels this is something that the next council should discuss it, and that's fine with me as well.
Thank, and you know what? Thank you, Vice Mayor Yasu, because you brought up a lot of different points that I think from where we are tonight, I don't think that we can nail all of that down. And one of the things that, and that's why I did it tonight too, was that we had the consent agenda to show as an option in terms of being a little bit more efficient, how maybe we can address some of the issues, and I know that Councilwoman Johnson has been talking about her process document that would incorporate the things that we're talking about tonight, as well as I know some other people in terms of consent agendas and other ways of time, restricting the agenda time to being two hours or three hours in terms of the business that we handle, and if we don't handle that business in that time, it gets moved to the next agenda, next council meeting. So, hearing all of that, that gives us multiple options in terms of looking at how we are most efficient as a council and as well as for the residents. Does, is that sound fair? So, you know, if maybe if we stop, take a moment, review this, allow the new council members to come in, because they may not want to put anything on the agenda, and then we don't have to worry about that, right? So.
I hope they will put something.
So, so, so good things. So, I'll entertain a motion, maybe.
I have a motion, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move to table the agenda item.
Do you want to table or postpone?
Well, postpone it until February council meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we table item, what is it, G nine until the February council meeting. Is there any more discussion?
I, I, I do want to commend Vice Mayor Yasu. I think it is a good idea to codify our procedure, because right now, it's not really codified, so whatever agreement we ultimately come to, whether it's a cap or, you know, some other kind of limitation, I do think it's a good idea to codify and put it in writing.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with that. One of my earliest attempts at, at moving things forward was to, to address some of the issues that I think this does address in terms of creating clarity, you know, with, within our constituents. I would urge those of you who remain on council in the future council to make sure that we don't create a system that prevents agenda items from actually making on the agenda for review to the concerns that have been raised in terms of time and everything else. This already is addressed in the ordinance as it's written, and item D, you know, where agenda is voted on and acted on, and so what that allows is allows members of council to get supplementary documentation and make their case to the public, you know, without it being shut down before it ever sees the light of day. And then if, if we realize time is running short, or the future council realizes time is running short, or things need to be prioritized, they still have that option in order to, to trim things where they need to. One thing I would also encourage, and I believe this would be a question, a future question for Mr. Quinn, not tonight, would be to look at making sure that a summary of our meetings are published, you know, within two business days of a council meeting, that's not the full minutes. That is something that is encouraged, if not required, by open records law. And then just from a, a place of transparency, I think for public access, because sometimes our meetings do run long, because this is a workday or tomorrow is a workday for most, if not all, of our constituents that, especially once our new website gets built up, we try to publish our video and audio recordings as soon as possible. I would, I would suggest within the, you know, two business days when an agenda summary is published. Obviously, minutes would, would happen later. And the final recommendation, I believe this was practiced, but it wasn't codified, is just to make sure that the names of the, you know, the primary council members who sponsor agendas and the cosponsors are also included on the agenda items, and that just allows the public to know who to talk to if they have questions or concerns concerning anything that, that comes up on the agenda, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I, I saw our city clerk over there just typing, writing that, writing stuff down.
Yeah, because we just wanted to make sure that we reiterate, you know, that, you know, staff had to transition during this process, and with our equip, equipment being limited, we did provide as much information to the public and transparency as we could. We are up to par now. Our wonderful city clerk is here, Ms. Lewis, and Suite One is available, and we're actually using the service tonight. So, as we proceed, we will continue to be as transparent as we can and provide that information to the public as it always has been.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, and then I'm going to start back up with my council highlights as well. So, we'll have that, and we'll be available to do that on YouTube and all social media channels. So, I also want to thank Vice Mayor Yasu for expressing and bringing up his concerns. You know, I know you want to make sure that we're as efficient as possible, and thank you for doing that. And so, I think we're going to have a spirit of collaboration to come together and make sure however and whatever we need to do to make sure that we're efficient for the residents, as well as for staffers too. So, we got to make sure we think about our staff as we're doing this as well. So, thank you. So, at this time, we have the.
Did we vote on it?
Doing great. So, are you ready for the question?
Yes.
Yes, all in favor to postpone item G nine to the February council meeting, say aye?
Council, I mean, work session.
Work session, make sure I say that. Work session, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? Motion pass. Thank you. So, with that being said, G ten, G eleven and G twelve were part of the consent agenda as well as G thirteen, which leaves us for approved allocating ARPA funds for distribution in twenty-twenty-two. Ms. Calwee?
That, Madam Mayor, has spoken for itself. That is the allocation for twenty-twenty-two ARPA funds. Madam Mayor?
Alright, that, that's, that's it.
So, the only question I had is for Councilmember Johnson, how much, I think you wanted to do ten thousand more for the food for the end of the year?
I'm not sure yet. I don't know how much to ask for.
But I definitely want to do something, but I needed to do something for December.
Right, that's what I'm saying. This, I'm talking, I'm talking only for December. It's only December.
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand, okay, so, so right now, what we're going to do is, I guess we got the forty thousand for those folks, and then fifteen thousand for you. Is there anything else, staff, that you need right now that we need to make sure we cover before the end of the year?
Not as far as assistance is needed, Madam Mayor. Rental assistance is down to the last, what, twelve, twelve hundred? Fifteen hundred dollars. So, we've helped a hundred and eighty-two? Eighty-six.
Okay, outstanding, okay.
Do you want to increase rental assistance at least slightly to get to the end of the year so that the new council can make a decision on it?
How much have we spent? Let's see, we spent.
Four, which line I don't remember.
Four hundred and ninety thousand on rental assistance, and.
I got a question, Madam Mayor. Didn't we stop it?
We did. Yeah, we did.
The application process has stopped, right?
After we've used.
You did say after this allocation, and the funds have been depleted, that you were not going to add additional funding to rental assistance.
Alright.
Alright, any other things? So, we'll have a motion in terms of addressing your particular item at this time, and then we'll proceed with the rest of the items, and making sure in terms of that forty thousand that we did today as part of the ARPA with that.
I have a motion.
Yes.
I move to add and amend this year's ARPA funding to include fifteen thousand dollars for food distribution.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we amend the ARPA funding budget for this year to include fifteen, to increase to fifteen thousand dollars for food distribution. You ready for discussion? Any more discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor to adjust the ARPA fundings to include fifteen thousand for food distribution for this year, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? Motion pass to entertain a motion to amend the meeting, and I would like the two people who are leaving to do it.
What is that?
To adjourn, you mean?
I'm not sure what you're trying to. Keep us till two a.m. Keep us till two A M.
You're going to adjourn the meeting.
I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay.
A second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adjourn the meeting. All in favor, you get, you come on.
Let him do that, let him do that. Motion, movement, all right.
All right, all righty. I want to make sure we did say that. All in favor, say aye? Okay, all right. Hey, Dan. I'm on the move again with this money, right?
Appreciate it.
There we go. All right.
Hey, you got a, I think I have your card. Do you have my info? Is it my, my council email December thirty-first? I'm not importing anymore, so. Maybe after tonight. Yeah, I've got, I'll shoot you an email with my, my other email address, my, my personal email, so. Okay, yeah, I'll be, I have one. I just want to make sure.
Appreciate it. I'm very happy. I, I do appreciate it. I'm going to thank you for that. I think it'll be a good thing.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. Thank you.